I'm calling the March 12th, 2020 regular meeting of the Roswell City Council to order. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs? Counselor Foster?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Best?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez is absent. Counselor Kenner?
Here.
Counselor Moore is absent. Counselor Robach?
Here.
Counselor Peterson?
Here.
Counselor Oropesa?
Here.
Mayor Kintai?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please rise while Counselor Foster leads us in the pledge of allegiance and Counselor Henderson does the invocation. Counselor Foster.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this freedom of our country. We're mindful of the plague that's before us, coronavirus. We ask for your healing grace and touches as we strive to correct this terrible disease in our midst. We're thankful for our nation, our leaders be with them and guide them. We pause for a special blessing on our colleague Savino Sanchez as he strives for new health. We're mindful of the death of our executive director for our municipal league, Bill Folgenetti. Be with his family and the leadership of the league as they now face the daunting task of his replacement. We're thankful for his life and leadership. Be with those that protect us, our responders, those at the military front. We're grateful for our freedom that allows us to meet here this evening. Guide us and direct us in all that we do. A special blessing on this council. Amen.
Counselor Kenner?
I move to approve the Thursday, March 12th, 2020 regular city council agenda to include the minutes from the February 13th, 2020 city council meeting. One scope of work, two purchases, five air center leases, five resolutions, and to pull item eight from the consent agenda and place it as a regular agenda item number 20, and to pull item number 17 from the consent agenda and place it as regular agenda item 21.
I have a motion by Counselor Kenner and a second by Counselor Peterson to approve the agenda pulling items eight and 17 from the consent agenda and putting them under the regular action items. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. We're still getting the votes in.
Sorry.
All right. And, whoa, that was quick. All right, that's not... We're missing Counselor Peterson's and Counselor Oropesa's vote on this machine. They did, I mean, we have you as a positive, but it's also showing four absent, which is not viable. All right, what we're gonna do, Ms. Call, we're gonna go to paper manual on all these votes. We don't have that many this evening, but once again, we seem to have a technical problem. We'll move forward. Announcements real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, please silence your cellphones. And I will make the note that this is the final regular meeting of the city council for Counselor Henderson. You outlasted Counselor Caleb Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I have enjoyed serving on this council and a total of 20 years.
Excellent. That's, I think that's longer than, see, Counselor Best has been around, right? All right. All right. This will not be your final official act, though. The Finance Committee is meeting on Tuesday, March 31st, one more time under Counselor Henderson's guidance. So, we will see you then. And then we will plan an event at the next city council meeting in April to acknowledge your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Robach, did you wanna jump in here?
I, is your name on the plaque out there at the airport for the, on the?
Yes, if you look long enough and back in the closet?
Yeah.
I think that plaque is back.
I saw that, and I think it was, the date was 1975.
I think that's right.
That was the year I was born.
Thank you, Counselor Robach.
That makes me feel a little old, but I feel good.
Moving right along. All right, item number two or three, Ms. Jennings, presentations.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing you to the Roswell Chamber of Commerce and the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce. The city, first, we're gonna start with the Roswell Chamber of Commerce. We entered into an agreement with a scope of service to promote business retention and development as well as relocation services for the city. In the agreement, there were a few quarterly items that needed to be submitted, which included an annual budget, a breakout of employee salary paid through city funding, its most recent financial audit, proposed budget, program reports, a report detailing how the city funds are expected to be spent, with 75% of the budget allocation to business development and retention, and 25% allocated to relocation services. Tonight, as part of the agreement, the Roswell Chamber of Commerce is to provide to the city council during a city council meeting their annual report. These reports include disclosure of chamber financial status, chamber profit and loss budget to the actuals and salaries, operations conducted during the preceding year, planned future operations, a list of membership renewals, canceled membership, and other information agreed to by both the chamber and the city. In addition, the chamber was to provide all meeting notices, minutes, and agendas for their chamber board meetings. So with that, I would like to introduce you to Candace Purcella, who will be doing her annual report.
Thank you, Juanita. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Per funding request, a detailed plan of the following items have been fulfilled or currently or in process of execution. The salary of the executive director, myself, salary of the social media marketing director, the first half only, and the salary of the membership coordinator. Business development and training, the executive director attends the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Institute of Organizational Manage every year in Tucson. This is a four-year program. I am currently in my second year, completed my second year. Advertising and marketing, we are currently in the process of rebranding and redoing our logo, the new chamber logo, and so we're currently kind of revising that and moving forward with that. Shop local campaign, the women in business, like I said, we're currently, well, let me go back, sorry. Website and additional links, young professional, young professional group and the retired Roswell, those are all part of our detailed plan contract with the city of Roswell. However, as of January 2020, we had, have cast our sights on the restructuring of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce. So some of the items that are detail, in our detailed plan, have been reviewed by the Board of Directors and the staff to line up the mission, to better line up with the mission of the Chamber of Commerce and our goals. With that being said, on behalf of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we wish to inform you that effective immediately, we are terminating the business retention service contract from the city of Roswell. With this note, notification, we comply with the minimum notice period required by agreement as discussed in a meeting with Mr. Joe Nieb and city manager and Juanita Jennings, Public Affairs Director, on March 10th, 2020. We have appreciated the service of the city of Roswell that has provided us throughout the years, this funding, but we are taking a better look at our scope of work and our business relations and our business needs in the community, and we want to focus more on that. All documents required per our contract for the first half of the agreement have been completed and sent to the city of Roswell administration. With that, I will take any questions.
Counselors, I have Counselor Best. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm, I'm understanding your letter. I understand that. I did spend quite a few hours going all the, over all the information that we have. I was unable to find the audit that is due for 2020. We have 16, 18, it's every two years, so I request that before you completely depart. I also would like, and, and, these are a lot of questions that I have, and I think they need to be answered.
That's fine.
When I look at this, I'm, I'm disappointed. You have a negative First Bank of America operating. You have a negative checking savings. You have outstanding bills to the tune for this time, $39,000, and that's the current liabilities. Your long-term add up to be $45,000. Just your current ones are 567% over 2018. We have no list of your AR aging, and since 2018, that is 248% over. I can go on. A few of the questions I think you can answer. We have a credit card bill here for $21,795.62, but we have no list of anything that credit card was spent on.
Okay.
I have a rumor that there's more than one credit card, but only one is listed here. So I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
We do have two credit cards, yes.
So only one is on here, so we're missing?
One is only being, one is being used.
Okay.
One is currently being used.
Okay. And I approached the audit, we don't have an audit.
As far as the audit, we do a biennial audit every two years. We are in compliance with our bylaws and our city agreement that we do a bylaw, bylaw, or an audit, I'm sorry, every two years. So our, we won't budget, we don't have it in our budget, we're not budget to do an audit this year. We will put that in the budget for next year to do 1920.
Okay, but you're leaving now. I would like an audit of the money you've already spent for the city.
And we had discussed that in the meeting with Joe and Juanita on Tuesday.
Okay. And you discussed?
And I wasn't in that meeting or privy to that information.
Yeah.
But I hope they agreed and you agreed that we will have an audit. I think that's very important for our taxpayers to know where their money has gone. Because in my world of business and bookkeeping, which I have very little bookkeeping, this stood out like crazy. Like major crazy, there's just stuff missing.
Well, there's nothing missing. We, we have, we have accounted for every, every bit of that. We have accounting for every bit of that.
Then I'd like to be able to see it so I could understand it. I'm not comfortable with your membership turnover. It just keeps going down and down. Your, your employee turnover, to me, is a big deal. Your redcoats and your Leadership Roswell, the redcoats pay $90 a person, and your Leadership Roswell is 550.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is that money if First American is negative?
As of the end of, that was, I believe that was the end of January on the, on the statement of financials. We, we did have a very rough month in December and January. I will be more than happy to sit down and account for every bit of that because we can, but it was a very rough month, December. I will be completely honest, we were heavily staffed, which, right now, is, has been a, we are making up the difference in that. So we are, we're seeing an influx, and we are back in the black as far as our, our operating account. There were a few, a few things that were done the month of December that the Chamber Board and myself, as far as doing staff bonuses and staff appreciation for November and December, that made us, that made us bleed a little bit. So.
Okay, before I, before I pass off to someone else, I would like the folks, the people in the audience on TV or whatever, to also know that the county has a contract with you.
Yes.
And they're dishing out $57,500.
Yes.
So the total between the two of us is $134,200 between two of us, just handing you money. And in my world of bookkeeping and business, which, again, I'm not the best.
Right.
At it, well, I'm the best at some things, but not the best at that. This is just, sorry.
It is.
Yeah.
I will be completely honest with you.
And?
It is, it is worrisome.
Yeah.
It is, it is very worrisome. The Board of Directors and myself are tackling this, and we are moving forward and getting this resolved, the best we know how. So that is, I mean, that's, it is, it is a concern. I will tell you that part of our, part of our, our loss in that is due to some, some events that we've had, we have done and that we have taken on. The last two years, we have accrued a debt from the Roswell Hispano Chamber for their side of the Cinco de Mayo in the amount of about $12,000 for the last two years that we have, we have eaten. Now, we are moving forward with Marcos on the, the debt that has occurred the last, for the last Cinco de Mayo event. He is, the Hispano Chamber is making those payments, but that is a, no interest. That's a minimal amount to the expense that we have, that we are, that we are responsible for, because we pay those vendors, and we're gonna pay those vendors.
Tell me a little bit about the Washington DC trip.
The Washington DC trip was a, was a horrible event last year because we had, we had, we had gotten into a contract of so many rooms, and due to the weather and due to the lack of people committing, or not being able to attend the DC trip, we, we lost, we lost out on that trip considerably.
Yeah, it's, it's negative $4,591.60.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you do at that event?
We go and, well, we, we talk on southeast New Mexico. The mayor has joined us on that trip. We talk about different issues that are arising in southeast New Mexico and Travis County, and we go talk to our delegation and different departments.
Okay. There's just so much, so many red flags in my pile. I guess I just?
They're probably the same red flags that I have.
I?
Because we are, we are, we are, we, it is a concern, and it is a concern of the board, and we are addressing it.
Well, it is a big concern, and your board has a big turnover, which, which bothers me. Your employees have a big turnover, which bothers me. When we, when I went through my packet and read your graphs and the statements from your people, because they're not resigning up, bothers me. People that have come to me and said that the chamber is rude bothers me, and I received a little bit of that when I asked you for somebody to shred, and I got two words, shred boss. That was it. I didn't get a phone number, an address, or anything, it was just very blunt.
Okay.
And, and it's just not all about me.
Well, if you've been in the, if you've been in the chambers?
I wanna know where the taxpayers' money is going, and we're not getting it here. We're getting a lot of excuses. Because two years ago, or a year ago, when we okayed this, this contract, I discussed this with you and asked you to please turn the ship around. It's sinking faster. When you need help, you need to ask for it. So I, I, I think I'm gonna yield because I'm gonna get frustrated here in a minute, and y'all aren't gonna like it. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Kenner, that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. For the purpose of full disclosure to both the council and the public, I was employed by the chamber, you know, for four months last year. I've been friends with Candace for nearly 30 years, going back to grade school. I resigned from the chamber when I was appointed after concerns with the board that my serving in both capacities would be a conflict of interest. So I wanted to just state that, because a lot of people know that I was there, but anyway. So, Janine, you kinda touched on my question. I continue to serve as a volunteer for the Leadership Roswell program that is a chamber program. So, according to the financial reports that you gave us, it stated that the redcoats account is reported as having $1,215.84. The Leadership Roswell program is reported having $8,560, according to your report. So with your operating account showing negative as of January 31st, 2020, are these monies in another account? How are these going to be paid back to those two programs?
Well, like I said, we are, the, the monies are in those accounts, we are back in the black, there, those, those accounts are, are secured.
You do not have separate checking accounts or savings accounts for those two?
No.
No, so everything goes into the general fund?
Right.
Okay. That was my question, thank you.
I have Counselor Robach. Counselor Robach, you have the floor, that exhausts my list.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wasn't expecting to, to, I guess, I don't like coming into meetings and things happen that I don't expect. So I question, so the current agreement, we, we, we signed and ratified, how long ago? Just one, one year?
A year ago.
From, from this month? Okay, so, and it was a two-year agreement, total?
The agreement started July 1st to run through June 30th for a continuation of up to four years, continuing each year.
Okay, so it was renewable each?
Each year, yes. And we did that for this chamber, the Hispano Chamber, and Main Street.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, I guess, you know, I, you know, I, you know, you guys are obviously going through a rough patch, and, you know, we need, we need a strong chamber of commerce, and I hope you guys pull through and can get past the rough patch and, 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 and move forward. I don't know if there's a question here, you can respond to it or not, but is there a reason why it was decided just to announce this publicly versus maybe letting us know ahead of time?
This was the decision based on the Board of Directors.
Okay, and so the board decided that?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, and there was any special reason why announcing it here versus?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't given.
All right. Thank you very much.
Right, I have Counselor Henderson and then Counselor Best. Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Candace, I just want to encourage you and your Board of Directors to, to kinda clean things up and get things straightened out. I think the Chamber of Commerce is an appoint, is an appoint, and a very important element in our community, and I think that the chamber plays a role in the overall success of our community. I think a lot of our business partners look to the chamber for training and special events. I certainly look forward to rise with Roswell, and I hope the virus doesn't destroy that too, but at any rate, it's those kinds of things that I think make Roswell what it is in the way of a positive community. And so I was president of the Chamber of Commerce back in the early 70s, and I think it's an important group that, that kinda leads the way for our positive approach to our community. So I certainly encourage you to, and your Board of Directors, to do everything you can to turn the ship around and, and be the star we want you to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have Counselor Best, and that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that we were gonna get a third-party audit.
That will be, I will take that up with the board, and we can, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Counselor Kenner?
Juanita, just for, sorry. Candace, you said that you had submitted everything that was required. But I didn't see the annual budget. I also didn't see that breakdown of the 75%. Am I correct?
Right.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have no one else on my list. I did have a couple of quick ones. As an ex officio member of the board, or formerly an ex officio member of the board, I was not present or aware of a board meeting to terminate. So was this the Executive Board of Directors?
It was the Executive Board and the Board of Directors, yes.
Okay.
It went to the Executive Board and the Board of Directors because ex officios are non-voting members.
Okay. Can you tell us who's on the Executive Board?
I sure can. Kay Whitefoot, Bill Marley, Mike Winters, Andrea Moore, and Nick Snowberger.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, counselors? If not, we'll go on to item number three. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I mean, four. Ms. Jennings, you wanna do another introduction?
Yes. All right, good evening, Council Mayor. I have the pleasure to introduce you to the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce. They entered into an agreement with a scope of service to promote business retention and development as well as community enhancement. That's the difference between the two contracts. The following items were to be submitted, which included quarterly reports, annual budgets, including breakdowns of any salaries paid through city funding, its most recent financial audit if available, proposed budget and programs report, a detail how the city funds were being used, with 75% of that budget allocation for business development and retention, and 25% for community enhancement. As, also in the contract, they were to provide an annual report at a city council meeting, and so tonight, they are here. Also in the annual report, it was to disclose chamber financial status, a chamber profit and loss, a budget to actuals, salaries, operations conducted during the preceding year, planned future operations, a list of membership renewals, any canceled membership, and any other information agreed to by the chamber and the city, as well as meeting notices, minutes, and agendas of their board meetings. With that, I would like to introduce you to their executive director, Marcos Nava.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and audience. My name is Marcos Nava, a 13-year resident of our beautiful city of Roswell. This month, I completed a year as the executive director of the Hispano Chamber of Commerce. The year has been interesting, challenging, but most rewarding. Tonight, I'm here to present the chamber's 2019 annual report. First, I'd like to introduce the chamber board members. This is a no-nonsense board. They are hardworking and dedicated to help our members do better in their field. Our community events are successful because of their hard work. There are no weak links. Like to introduce, and maybe they can stand, President Matt Martinez, Vice President Alejandra Garcia, treasurer, not present, Alex Urquides, Secretary Veronica Arias, and board member El. Secretary Veronica Arias, and Board Member Alice Armandadis, Manuela Ramirez, not present, and Sandra Quintero, not present. How would I describe this Cinco de Mayo balloon festival? A super fantastic family event. In our best estimates, over four thousand people came in and out of the event. There were, there were great variety of food vendors, tacos, tamales, Thai food, hamburgers, hot dogs, corns, et cetera. Live music, country, norteno music, and the hot air balloons was a great event. The chili, the piñata and chili cheese festival was held September 25th and 26th. A super fantastic event. We partnership with Main Street Roswell and Eastern New Mexico State Fair. Everyone I spoke with enjoyed the event. We could have used more attendees during the two-day festival. Kids enjoyed the piñatas. But let me tell you about my special event. The Taco Jalapeno Eating Contest. In the jalapeno contest, there were ten participants. Nine husky male, and a young lady, kind of fragile. I wish, I hope that she had a lot of suntan lotion, because she would need it, sunscreen lotion, because she would need it. And as soon as I saw her signing up for the jalapeno contest, I went to our first responders and asked them to be ready, just in case. I thought, one bite of the jalapeno, and she's going to faint. Took a bite, went through five jalapenos. Make a long story short, she won. And she's coming back to defend her title. I'm not gonna tell you her name, but she's a radio personality at ninety-four point nine country radio station. We had a wonderful event, a first-time event. We call, it's the Dia de los Muertos on November, on Saturday, November 1st. We partnership with the Public Library. We had a huge success. Kids play games, face painting, food, and goodie bags. Adults and children learn about the significance of the Dia de los Muertos. Isn't it costly? The librarian was pleased with the event. We are ready, we are already planning this year's event to be held on Saturday, October 31st, at the library. As I said earlier, it's been a super busy year. We created a new fundraiser. We call it Posole and Lottery Night. Lottery for us is like the American Bingo. Harabe, we had another event, which was very successful, the Harabe Mexicano Concert, a collaboration with the Roswell Independent School District and the Artisia Arts Council. More than six hundred students participated in this event. I'd like to recognize School Board Member Ms. Mona Kirk for helping us open up the doors at the Pearson Auditorium. My thought about, for the event was, maybe we'll take this group into a school, maybe a couple of classes would come and hear them. And she said, oh, no, this is too big, too good. We're gonna have it bigger. Six hundred students ended up attending the Pearson Auditorium. Continuing with activities, our board, myself, we cannot say no. You come, you ask, we do it. We participated at the Roswell Cleanup Weekend, the Gold Latinas Seminar, with the Eastern New Mexico University Roswell Cultural Awareness. We've had our Diadas. This is our opportunity for our members to do business networking. And currently, out of nowhere, I've been asked to be a coach for three individuals who own small businesses, and I, and I accept it. All of us in the, of, all of us in the chamber believe we can do better and improve. All we have to do is do a plan, and work our plan, and we'll get there. We are ready. Upon, upon, upcoming focuses will be to fill our membership, our chamber committees, increase members' engagement, increase membership base by twenty-five percent. When I got this goal from, from President Martinez, he looked me in the eye, he goes, "You can do it, Marcos, you can do it." And of course, we wanna increase our revenue. This slide shows how we have used our financial resources, which equates to how I, I have allocated my time. Please note, executive time is fourteen percent of, of the, of the resources and monies, and census has taken twenty percent of my time, which I will address that later on. We have reorganized our chambers committee. We've put them together, educational, cultural is one, public relations and, and special projects, economic and government, and membership and finance. We've worked on our 2020 calendar. We have planned accordingly, and we will fulfill our obligation to serve most business, the, the business people in our chamber. At this point, I'd like to publicly thank the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce for hiring me as their executive director and not, and allowing me to fully engage as a full-time volunteer for the 2020 census campaign. Thank you, City Council, for your trust, if you, as you voted me to allow to be the complete count chairman. I also wanna thank the forty-plus complete count committee members that have worked hard, and more hard work is to be done. Before I say done for the night, as of today, it's still on, let me invite all of you and the public to come to a super census event, which is gonna be held at the Roswell High School on Saturday, April 25th. We're gonna have, we're gonna have tamales. My mom gave me special permission to use her, to use her secret, secret recipe. We will have drinks, music, children's games, and various people to inform about the importance of the census, plus people to help, people to fill out their census form. The event starts at nine thirty a.m. and will end until there are no más tamales. Let's make sure we fill out the census form. Roswell, we're counting on you. Done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. I have Counselor Best and Counselor Henderson. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
Mr. Nava, you are such a refreshing breath of air. We've been fighting with the Hispano Chamber for years and years, and we, and we didn't see what needed to happen, and you came in with your new breath of fresh air, and you turned that ship around. I am, I am so thankful and appreciative that you've taken the reins and you've gone on, and I got my census today.
Yahoo!
So I want everybody, this is what it looks like. There's fourteen languages on here. So don't forget to do your census and your part to help Roswell. And, Mr. Nava, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Henderson and Counselor Kenner. Counselor Henderson.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations, Marcus. You've done a good job. Thank you for stepping up on our census. I too received my census today, and so you delivered as you promised. And we look forward to a successful, full-count census committee effort in our community, and we keep our fingers crossed for the fifty thousand. But I wanna say, good job with the Hispano Chamber and a good job with the census. So you and your crew are to be congratulated, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you. And next is Counselor Kenner, and that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Thank you so much for putting this, this report together. I think you did a great job, and I appreciate the, all your board members, or the majority of your board members were able to come. And I noticed that, I did actually read all of your minutes and all of that, and I noticed that the majority of the time at all of your events, you were able to get your entire board one-hundred percent there. So I think that you've done a great job, and I appreciate you guys in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Oropesa, that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everybody else's comments as well. You know, and, and the Roswell Hispano Chamber is very special for me, 'cause I was involved with the Roswell Hispano Chamber for a while. And I see now that you're the executive director, that you have a lot of success, but it's not just because of you. And please don't take it, don't take it wrong. It's because you also have a Board of Directors that is willing to, to work and, and sacrifice their time. And, and if you didn't have those Board of Directors behind you, like any other thing, you know, the executive director would have a hard time trying to, to do their, their job. And so I applaud you and, and the Board of Directors as well, and I hope that you can continue on the right path. The only, the only concern that I have is, and maybe that's just me, is the combination of, of the events. I, I would like to see the Hispano Chamber bring back their Piñata Fest to, to downtown. Would be my, my preference. Because when, when you do it on your own, you, you can, you can account for every penny that, that is given to you, that you make and so forth. When you partner up with somebody else, then it takes a different, a, a different way of, of doing business. And I thought I just heard the previous individual said that you guys were, were having to pay payments because of issues that happened. So I, I would like to see the Hispano Chamber go on, on their own and, and create the, the programs that they are creating, and I hope that we will never, ever lose the Piñata Fest, because that is a staple event for the Hispano Chamber. And again, thank you, and thank you, Board, for everything that you do.
Let me just answer the Piñata Fest. I think, right, Mr. Oropesa, it is a signature event for the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, and it's also a very popular event for the kids that attend that festival. This year, the, the Piñata Fest is going to be done by itself. The, last year, we did, did it with the Main Street Roswell in mutual agreement. We were both very happy. I love those ladies, they're wonderful ladies. With lesser people in attendance, we ended up in the black. We made money, and they made money. We were just wiser. So yes, I agree with the Piñata Fest. We're gonna take it to where you, where you used to be, in high, in high regards in the community, and the kids will continue breaking those darn piñatas. Thank you so much.
Counselor? Okay. Thank you. That exhausts my list, Mr. Nava. I'm going to, I'm gonna say thank you for the census work. That is, you've just done an incredible job, and it's, I, I can't say enough. You've, you've taken this one on, and you've served this community, the entire community, and you are to be thanked and congratulated. I want you to know, you have my personal, deep thanks for all you do, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Neb, I do have a question for you, though. Now, this termination agreement with the Roswell Chamber, is, is there a payment structure here such that there will not be money going to the chamber now? Or have all the seventy-six thousand been paid? Or where are we at with that then?
You know, as, as we received that letter just tonight, and a little bit after five o'clock, we, we will go through that, that review of that, and I believe you can tell us where we're at with the payments.
So we were in quarter three. We pay after the services have been rendered. So they've received two payments in this fiscal year for quarter one and quarter two. January, February, and March payment would be due in April. So we will need to discuss what would happen next.
So we, we will have at least one payment that will not be due if the termination all works its way through.
Two, actually. The quarter three and quarter four.
Quarter three and quarter four.
Okay. Just wanted to get that clarified. Okay. Any other questions, comments, Counselor, before we move on? Counselor Best.
Sorry. Can, can we insist on an audit before we make payment? And, and I know I'm being bullheaded and stubborn, but I think we need to have transparency for the city that has paid this money and spent this time, along with our taxpayers and our citizens.
Yes, those conversations will continue with the, the Roswell Chamber, and I'll, I'll make sure that the City Council stays informed of, of, of where we end up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. And ladies and gentlemen, items five through nineteen on the agenda were adopted, when the consent agenda was adopted, with two exceptions. Item number eight was pulled from the consent agenda and is now item number twenty. And item number seventeen on the original agenda also is off the consent, and is item number twenty-one. So at this point, we will proceed to item number twenty, formerly known as item number eight. Counselor Foster.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the professional service contract with legal firm of Sherman &amp; Howard for the preparation of the Tax Increment Development Districts, or TID, and the Public Improvement Districts, PID. This item was heard at Legal on February 27th, and came to the Council with a three-O approval.
All right. I have a motion by Counselor Foster to approve a contract with, a professional service contract with the firm of Sherman &amp; Howard, and a second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Morris?
Good evening. This is a request for a professional service agreement with the legal firm of Sherman &amp; Howard, who have a special expertise with respect to the creation and monitoring of the, the Tax Increment Development Districts and the, the Public Improvement Districts. These are self-funding mechanisms that are used for the installation of infrastructure within specific geographic areas that are offset by value increases of those properties within those specified districts. It's not a general tax. It doesn't come into, it doesn't hit the, the general fund. It is specifically determined by a specific location on the ground. These, this firm, and specifically Jill Sweeney, who will be the, the primary on this, has a lot of experience with these things. These, they're very complex. They're not simple at all, but they're very effective. Towns everywhere from Los Alamos to, I'm sorry, Las Cruces to Taoski Valley to the Wind Rock experience that you see up there. There are a number of these out and about, and they have been proving very useful in being able to provide infrastructure efficiently for development in the future that has not come back to the general, or the local government. Anyway, I'd like to introduce Jill and have her speak about the generalities of these. We're asking for this agreement so we can start the process of establishing a series of instructional meetings between Jill and the individual council committees, so they get used to this and what we're talking about in detail, because there is a lot of work, there is a lot of commitment, but this agreement does not commit us to anything, and I need to say that. Doesn't commit you to anything at all, except what we want to try to do in this. So with that, and I'll bring Jill forward.
Ma'am, if you'll go ahead and state your full name, your organization, and an address, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jill Sweeney. I'm with the law firm of Sherman &amp; Howard, the Albuquerque office. I have been practicing law in New Mexico for twenty-seven years now, primarily in the area of finance and economic development and tax incentives in, for the state and local governments, including districts. As Mr. Morris indicated, I've been working with Public Improvement Districts and Tax Increment Districts since their inception, when the legislature put those acts into place in the two thousand six, seven, eight, eight range. And these are financing mechanisms designed to put public infrastructure into the ground. So on the Public Improvement District, special assessments are put in place that are primarily used to finance intract infrastructure in residential areas. And on the tax increment side, incremental growth in property tax and gross receipts tax is used to finance public trunk infrastructure. So the purpose of our discussion this evening is to, to introduce ourselves and, and these financing tools, and as Mr. Morris says, put together a, a series of educational presentations that will culminate in the opportunity for you to decide whether to put guidelines in place in the form of, of ordinances, one for PIDs and one for TIDS, that would outline how the, how the city how the, how the city wants to go forward, or if the city wants to go forward in providing those, those tools. They're not designed with any one particular project in mind, but allow you to put together an application, application process in order to consider those opportunities when they arise. So I'm pleased to, pleased to be here and work with the city and the staff and offer the benefit of, of our experience. We also work, as Mr. Morris mentioned, with districts in the city of Albuquerque and Bernalillo County, Village of Los Lunas, Sunland Park, Village of Taoski Valley that he meant, mentioned, and actually had a Wind Rock board meeting this afternoon before coming to see you. So I'll stand for any questions, and I look forward to opportunity to work with you.
All right. I have Counselor Foster, Counselor Henderson, and Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Well, I, at first, when I saw this, thought that it was an added tax, an added property tax, or an added gross receipts tax. And then Mr. Morris explained to us that it was no, it was pulling, kind of clawing back the state, the state's portion of the property tax, or how it was designed, so that we were using the state's money to helpfully develop these areas.
So Mr. Mayor, Representative Foster, Counselor Foster, in a tax increment district, the taxes can come from the city, the county, the state taxing, you know, taxing jurisdictions, and they offer increment above the base. So for example, if we establish a district in 2020, then the, then the base would be the base that's established in the calendar year prior, so that would be 2019, and then you decide what increment over that base, what gross receipts tax or property tax increment over the base, would go back into that geographic area for infrastructure purposes, and public infrastructure, right? So infrastructure that would be owned by you or by the highway department or by a public entity. So the public dollars can only be used for public infrastructure.
Okay. I have Counselor Henderson and Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just, I've heard over the years about these opportunities to create these development districts, and number one, does the, or do the owners in that area, the, the real estate owners, do they have a say, or do they get to vote as to how they're going to be included in this district, and, and then do they have an extra tax?
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Henderson, it, it's different for public improvement districts and tax, tax increment districts. So in public improvement districts, if there are residents in the district on, in the property, yes, they have to, they have to approve or, or vote. In a public improvement district, the property is assessed, so if you own a residence in a particular, or, or a commercial business, but not as often, in a public improvement district, then you get a line on your tax bill, and, and the county treasurer includes, includes the assessment on that property tax bill. Those assessments are established based on, by, by a feasibility consultant with, based on the size of the property or some other measure, and then a maximum is, is typically set so that any, any resident would know what the maximum rate that assessment would be. And then on the tax increment side, that's invisible to, to property owners or business owners. You pay your, you pay your gross receipts tax, you know, you buy a widget, it costs X, your tax is Y, tax and rev collects that, and then that money goes, the portion that's, that the city designates to go to the tax increment district, goes to the district directly from the state.
Now, is the tax an additional tax, or do you just carve out some of the existing tax?
It's a carve-out.
A carve-out.
So it does not increase your, it does not increase your tax.
So...
You're just designating, sort of like when you appropriate funds, general funds, you say, we're gonna spend X million on, I don't know, Main Street, whatever road you pick. And this is, is another mechanism to, to do that.
Okay. I think I see, said the blind man. Thank you.
Plenty, it's, it's, you know, there's plenty of opportunity to, to, to learn, and we'll, you know, we'll give presentations and put together PowerPoints and have further discussions.
Well, I, I just would assume that you gather up the people in the district to, to decide how you're gonna align the district so that everybody can be on board with that funding for the infrastructure. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that is typical in the event that people live there. A lot of times, these districts are formed when there's nothing there, right? And in that event, in that event, the city works with, with the developer to put those parameters in place.
I see.
But you all have, you all have jurisdiction over that, for lack of a better word.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Oropesa, Counselor Robach, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, what is the cost to the city for your service if we approve this?
A miss...
Excuse me, Counselor. It's on page, the fee schedules are on page.
Well, I, I saw the fee schedules, but I wasn't able to read them. It didn't make sense to me.
Uh, where's...
Go ahead.
So in plain language, what, what is the amount of money that the city is looking to pay for their service?
It depends on the service at this point. What is the amount of services that we're building in? The fee schedule that you have for the bond work is on the left-hand side, and the hourly work that we're gonna be requesting is on the right-hand side. And it's all by work, work order?
Well, the, the other reason that I'm asking is, why was this not an RFP instead of just selecting a, a particular contractor?
Mr. Morris, can you get closer to the microphone, so the record can pick you up?
Jill is gonna answer this one.
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Oropesa, you have different options in procuring services. In this instance, the city's asked to piggyback on our contract with Bernalillo County, and you have that, that contract. It has very favorable government, government discounted rates. So for formation of districts, we typically charge an hour, discounted hourly rate. In this instance, because we've done a number of these around the state in other areas, we expect it to be fairly efficient. The other mechanism that you could, could employ if you would, if you would like, would be some sort of small purchases, small purchases contract. Once a district is formed and you're working on a project, if you have outside folks coming, developers that are gonna come to work on the project or apply to do a project, then they pay all of those fees. So there's a small piece while you're up, up front, that you pay by the hour when you're putting together the structure for, for accepting applications and beginning, and beginning the process, and then after that, the burden shifts to a developer or others who would be looking to create and to, looking to put the infrastructure into the ground.
Can you walk us through a scenario, let's say the Cielo Grande? I understand this is one of the ones that we're anticipating to use this on.
That's correct.
Can, can you walk us through a scenario from beginning to the end of, of how it's paid and...
The reason that we, we initially looked at...
Mr. Morris, get a little closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll yell a lot. Oma, the old municipal airport, was the genesis for all of this, because as we were going through the, the master planning, it was obvious that there was going to have to be a lot of infrastructure placed out there when the city is having a difficult time trying to take care of a lot of different issues around the place. What's nice about this type of process, the TID, is that the property owners get the benefit of the monies that they put in through the funding. Basically, it's not, not everybody else has to carry these other folks. What's nice about the old municipal airport is that there's one owner. It's us. We don't have to talk to fifty, sixty, a hundred other different property owners. It's one owner. It's us. The baseline on that property out there right now to the zero, the, the city is zero. It's not taxed at anything. It's zero. So your baseline, you couldn't get any better. One owner, a large property, and no valuations to start with. And the intent here is to look at a funding mechanism that's going to be able to be put in place over time, working with the developer, to install the public infrastructure that's gonna be needed to support anything out there. We're talking about water lines, sewer lines, roads, traffic circles, the plaza. We're talking about all of that public infrastructure that has to go in out there. It's in bits and pieces, but it's not to the level or where it has to be. We're talking about additional roads that being constructed. We're talking about a 500-acre area, and so that particular property is gonna need a lot of infrastructure. And that money's gonna come from that, within that property. The TID allows for the payment of those bonds that would be issued to offset that infrastructure installation. So that's why we, this is just, it's, from my view, this is perfect for doing, trying to do that.
Well, I, I guess I'm still confused, 'cause I, I wanna see like a, a picture of the starting, how the, the land comes into play, when does the, the, the tax come into play, and how much money are we talking about when you go out and, and, and ask for bonds? And how long is it gonna take to pay? And if I understood you correctly, Mr. Morris, the other day that I talked to you, you mentioned something to the effect of there could be an authority, a commission from that designated area that would be able to, at, at least the way I understood it, would have authority to be able to go after bonds and, and so forth. And so what I wanna know is, how does all that come together?
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Oropesa, this, this is the first step of the process, to put an ordinance in place that says this is how we're going to take these steps? That's the first step. Then the second step would, and that's what we're talking about today. The second step would be to put together a plan and form a district, and that's where you're talking about. The district board could either be you all sitting as a district board, or it could be members that, members that you appoint. Then from there, you would have the plan in place, and you would decide whether you would use bonds to finance the infrastructure, whether you would use cash, pay-as-you-go to fund that infrastructure. But at this time, the, what we're doing is trying to put together the structure to allow you to get to the point where you have the board, and you can put together the plan to go forward, and that you can, you can have a, have a clear path forward. Right now, we're trying to get you to the point where you, to establish that board, so you don't have in front of you today the plan with the, with, with the dollars and how the financing mechanism would work. This, this ordinance that you're, you're moving toward would, could be used for this project, could be used for other projects. It says, this is how the city is, is going to go through these steps. This is what the city expects the board to look like. This is what all financings have to have in them. Here are the parameters to protect the city that, that need to be included in, in the ordinance. And all of those things. It puts the structure in place to put, so that you can put the board in place under the statute and move forward with the project. Does that, does that help?
No. I, I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, take me step by step by step. You, we, we hire you, and you come up with a plan, ordinance, or what have you, okay? But you're gonna charge us whatever number of dollars to be able to do that, right?
Correct.
Which would be like $250 an hour?
Something in that range.
Okay. What, once that ordinance is in place, okay? Then the, the council is going to say yea or nay as far as the, the section of the community that we want to implement this TID, or whatever it's called.
Yes, sir.
And let's say, let's say it's Cielo Grande, or, or the Oma. Okay. How much money would you anticipate, based on the land out there, and based on what Mr. Morris said, that we need to put roads and sewer and, and water and what have you? What would be an estimation? I, I know you can't give me a, a direct answer. What would be the estimation as far as a bond that, that we would be asking? Because at this point, it would be the council, unless we decide to, to install a new authority out there.
So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Oropesa, in order to do a tax increment district, you have to create a board, and the bonds would not be the bonds of the city, they would be the bonds of, of the district that you create.
So who would be responsible for paying them?
The district.
The district? Not, not the city?
Not the city. Not the city. They're not, they're not the obligation of the city. They're, they would be the obligation of, of the district you create. So, I mean, here's, here's my example, it's probably not a very good one, right? But it's, it's like a child, right? You, you have a child, the child goes off to college, the child grows up and makes its decisions and do those things. And if they decide to incur that debt that would be repaid in a, by the, the growth in the property taxes or gross receipts taxes, then that's their decision and not yours, unless you choose to be the board. You could choose to take on that responsibility, but you are still acting as a board that's separate and apart from the city. So under no circumstances can this allow debt of the city to be created.
Okay, so what's the, I'm, I'm calling it authority for, for like a better word.
It's fine.
What, what's that? When authority is, is created?
A tax...
What I, what I'm hearing is, then they will have full authority to determine whether they wanna go through a tax or not, or a bond. And if, if indeed they go through a bond, then the city is not responsible?
Correct.
It would be that authority?
Yes, sir.
And what happens if they default?
These are interesting, interesting types of bonds, right? There are land-based bonds, the investors, they're not the responsibility of the city. The district has to collect revenue, the district has to, has to pay on those bonds, but the investors, the investors take the risk. So the tax revenue is used to pay those bonds as those, up to the amount that that revenue is available. If that revenue is not available, then the developer has to finish at its own cost.
So let's, let's just say for, for, for discussion purposes, let's say that they ask for 20, $20 million.
Okay.
That $20 million is gonna be paid by a certain section of the community, not the entire community, right?
Correct.
That section, that Oma.
Correct.
So when, when the land gets, gets sold and so forth and so on, they are the ones that gonna take up that, that liability?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about the, excuse me, the property owners that happen to go in after the initial carving up, yes, they become liable. The, all the owner, all the owners, all the future owners, then take on that liability for the installation of that infrastructure.
And is that gonna be this close to them?
Of course.
That they, they have to pay extra tax, or...
Absolutely. So, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Oropesa, in a public improvement district, there's a special assessment that appears on the tax bill, and there are many disclosures that need to be made in, to property owners prior to them deciding either to elect to put a public improvement district in place, or, or to purchase property that's located within the district. In a... In a tax increment district, that's funded from new taxes, right? New growth in taxes over a particular amount. In that instance, as I said, that's invisible. But there are many feasibility consultants and accountants that verify the numbers and the projections, and can anticipate with incredible accuracy. And I'm not an actuary. It's not what I do for a living. But anticipate the revenue flow that will be available for repayment.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think for the amount of section, I think you're asking a lot of those property owners. Right now, it's the city, I know that. But once the property owners come in, there's going to be a few of them that are going to be responsible for, and I'm saying in approximately $20 or even above $20 million to be able to provide for the infrastructure. And so, you know, it seems that if it's just a few that are paying for that extra tax or bond or whatever it may be, that amount is going to be quite a bit in comparison to everybody sharing in.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Opeza, I think it depends. Typically, in a public improvement district, there is a maximum. So, and just to give you an idea, and I'm basing on other communities. So, you might be looking at something that says you'd pay $800 a year if you lived in that community, or $1,100, something, and I'm just guessing, because we don't have the number of rooftops, we don't have the lot sizes, we don't have a lot of information. But typically, we see something in that, something in that range.
Have you created one in a community that's basically our population, other than like Albuquerque, Las Cruces, or Rio Rancho, or anywhere like that?
Yes. So, there is a public improvement district going in place now in the village of Los, excuse me, the village of Los Lunas. There are several public improvement districts in the city of Sunland Park. So, there are many, there are also other communities who have put the tool in place, and to my knowledge, have not used them. For example, the city of Belen. So, there are many, many communities around the state that have the tool in place. So, if you put the tool in place and the numbers don't work as you're fearing, so if you're not committing to any expenditure, but to the opportunity to form them, to get that infrastructure into the ground and paid by another entity, right? And then have that other entity be reimbursed if and as the revenue becomes available and that development grows.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have Councilor Robach and Councilor Henderson. Councilor Robach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of maybe more technical questions about the process. So, I'm a little unclear on exactly what we're voting on here. As far as that, it says an agreement for professional service, and we've got the agreement attached from you mentioned something about piggybacking on that.
Right. I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Robach, what you're voting on tonight is to give us the go-ahead to work with your staff to put.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just saying, what document? What is the actual agreement that we are? We are, it says, you know, a professional service contract. What is the actual contract that we are approving? That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Holloman, you want to answer that?
What it would be is it would be that same agreement. There would be a cover page to it that says that we, the city of Roswell, are using, agreeing to enter into this contract pursuant to these terms. So, it's those terms just incorporated for the city of Roswell.
Thank you.
All right. And then Councilor Henderson, that exhausts my list. Councilor, you have the floor.
Well, I think you've answered the question partially anyway. I just was curious as to know the communities that have been successful with this plan. And you mentioned Sunland and Los Lunas. And so, obviously, there has been some success with this type of program. So, I think it's certainly worth our investigation, and we need to take the first step in order to make it work. Thank you.
All right, that exhausts my list. I have no one else wishing to speak. Unless there is some other questions or comments, I will call for a vote. However, before I do that, let the record reflect that at 7:01, Councilor Stubbs dropped off the phone line. So, there'll be seven of us participating in this vote. Or seven of you. Because there's an odd number, I don't get the vote. Counselor, behave. All right. So, we're going to do a roll call because I'm a little distraught with the electronics again. So, a yes or a no agrees to entering into an agreement, a professional services contract with the law firm of Sherman and Howard for the preparation of tax increment development districts and public improvement districts as set forth in the packet. A no or a nay rejects entering into the contract. So, Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Kenner?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Opeza?
Yes, with an explanation, please.
Motion passed unanimously.
I have Counselor Foster showing up as a yes vote. Counselor, can you try your button again? All right. We're just, we're going to disregard this equipment altogether. Are you confident you have the actual vote? All right. Counselor Opeza, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went ahead and voted yes because I think this is a good idea, but I don't fully understand it. And so, I am willing to go ahead and see what it turns out to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. All right. Next item is item number 21. Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2016, which is a resolution for the city of Roswell amending the budget for a fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020 by increasing revenue and offsetting expenses for design cost of the two HVAC units at the convention center.
Okay. And Counselor, if you'll hit the motion button there. I have a motion by Counselor Henderson and a second by Counselor Kenner to approve Resolution 20-16. Ms. Jennings?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before I begin the presentation, I do want to introduce some of my colleagues that will be joining me tonight. A new one returning to the city of Roswell, his hometown. I'd like to introduce you to our new Facility Director, Mr. Abraham Chaparro. That's Abraham. And then, of course, Trent Moore, he will be joining me. And I will also call on our financial experts, Ms. Becky Hicks, Juan Fuentes, and Ms. Monica Garcia, our Director of Finance. So, with that, I would like to give you a little bit of background. Tonight, we are asking you to approve the Resolution 2016 for architectural and engineering for two HVAC systems on the south side of this facility. As you are aware, we did just do a remodel, and these two units that are in discussion right now were reviewed. During that time of the remodel, these units were anticipated and expected to have a longer lifespan than what they currently are at right now. With Trent Moore coming on board and our Spectra team, we have implemented a facility operations review that occurred in the fall. During that review, the evaluation, we believe that there is a phase two of this project that needs to be completed. And it was indicated at that time that these two units would no longer support the lifespan that had previously been determined in phase one. In January, one of the units had a catastrophic occurrence with, it was a failure. It is no longer working. So, we only have one unit on the south end currently working, which is putting additional stress. This resolution, again, is just for the architectural and engineering to replace that with the structure. So, I'm going to go over a couple of slides to show you. These are the two units that I am referring to. It was presented at the January Infrastructure Committee, and it was also put on the master priority needs list. Again, we knew that these would need to be taken care of. We just didn't anticipate this soon. Staff did recommend to approve the A&E design cost in the amount of $61,000. That's our recommendation to this council. We will have a better estimate of the full project cost once the A&E design costs are complete. Our facility maintenance team did review multiple options that I'm going to go over that included the ground-mounted option, the rooftop option, a variable refrigerant flow, and then also an option for multiple smaller units. This recommendation is the most cost-effective according to our subject matter experts. And it also has a like and kind parapet roof design that would offer this facility the expansion possibility for future. So with that, here were the consideration and analysis that was completed for the other options. One of them was the ground-mounted. I did them in order of least cost to most expensive. For ground-mounted, the reason why this wasn't presented as the recommendation was due to aesthetics, relocation of a bunch of electrical lines, our fire line, high priority probably for vandalism because of the compressor. That alone would cost roughly about $2,000 in the copper in that. Additional concrete pad that would be needed. And then also, it's the back-of-the-house area of the convention center. The multiple smaller unit option, oh, and the first one was an estimated impact of $617,000 for the full project. Again, these are just estimates. We need this resolution in order to understand what the full cost would be. The second option was the multiple smaller units. The reason this was not selected, again, was just the extensive structural impact that it would have. Changes to accommodate five units versus two units. And then the last one was really not considered. This is the same unit that is at our recreation and aquatic facility. This is a variable refrigerant flow. Again, I'll ask my subject matter experts to discuss that if you have questions. But this is not a feasible option due to the type of facility that we have in the exhibit hall. I'd like to show you, this is something that Hewlett-Zohler submitted to our facility maintenance team. This is the ground-mounted units. It's a rendering option. I've pointed out all of the impacts to this option here, which would include our mechanical room, our electric room, staff parking, grease traps and fire lane, or the fire line, and then the food and beverage loading area. This rendering, you can see between the three arrows, there's kind of a wall that would be contained for those ground-mounted options. Again, very high possibility and probability for vandalism. I thought it was important to kind of show you what the actual view looks like. I wish this had a laser. Where you see the grease traps, it's actually on the floor. There's four circular items. That's where our grease is collected from the kitchen. And then also, we have a fire line there. This is the primary reason why the ground-mounted option was not selected because of all of the impact it would have for this back-of-house area, including event loading, the electrical room access, the mechanical room access, and then, of course, food and beverage. As the Spectra team is continuing to book larger events utilizing that kitchen, we have had to have this parking lot with a Cisco truck for refrigeration. This option for architectural and engineering design would allow additional consideration and thoughts for expansion. So, we have a storage room that is just right behind where the loading dock is that we're currently storing glassware, silverware, things like that. It could be a possibility in the future in phase two that that becomes our new refrigeration room so that we do not have to keep renting a Cisco truck to store the food for the large events that we are booking here at this facility. With that, again, I will stand for any questions, but our staff recommendation is to approve the architectural and engineering design costs for Resolution 2016. We believe that it's a less impact to the existing infrastructure and has the possibility for future expandability. Additionally, we currently do have funding in the Lodger's Tax Cash Reserve, a little over a million dollars that would cover the $61,000 that we're asking for. And I will stand for any questions and bring any of our staff up here if you have questions specific to them.
All right. I have Counselor Best. That exhausts my list. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
So, am I to understand, are these going to be the same size, bigger?
My understanding, I'll have Trent come and talk to you about that. The reason for this structural design, these are the same units that were put in back in 1997. As time has gone on, we have more efficient units. And so, the hole in the roof right now will not custom, or not custom fit, not fit to what is on a store shelf. That's my interpretation. I'm going to let Trent talk about the technical piece.
I think my question, Trent, is are these going to be on the roof? Is the roof, can they hold the weight and the movement of the units moving? I know I have issues with that over at the Heritage House where they move and.
Yes, ma'am. That is why we're asking to go to design so the engineers can look at the structure, evaluate it, and make sure that they're able to carry the load, the plans that we would like to do in the future if necessary. That's initially what they're going to be looking at.
So, we're also looking to the future if we decide to?
Yes.
Expand a little bit?
Yes. We'll be able to have the calculations in hand moving forward to know how much we could expand.
Okay. Thank you.
I have Counselor Peterson. That exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
So, these units, you're going to have to build a new structure to hold these units? Is that why it costs so much?
The, not necessarily a new structure. They are physically larger than the current units. The current units currently don't meet the current code for accessibility. So, with the physical size of it, we need to expand that parapet area to get them in that, those locations.
Well, if you put them on the ground, it'd be a lot easier to maintain them.
Maintenance, I don't think maintenance is an issue no higher than they are. I think if they were any higher, there is a little bit of savings if they are ground-mounted for repairs. You don't have to mobilize as much equipment. But I think that, in my opinion, the potential for the vandalism and repairs and things that we would need to do on a ground-mounted system would outweigh putting them back in the current location.
But I think if you put them on the ground, install a fence around them, you know, I don't think these units are that big. They would take up that much space that you showed on that picture. They would, I don't think they would take up that much room. Maybe two parking spots, maybe.
Counselor Peterson, that is the reason we are bringing this resolution forward is we would like to have a more clear understanding of what the design would look like. And for all of the council and mayor, I just wanted to remind you, Lodger's Tax has very specific uses and allowances. And so, one of the uses is for a convention center facility. The other use is for advertising and marketing. And so, again, this resolution. And so again, this resolution is really just for that design cost to really evaluate, do we have enough room and get it from, from the experts?
Well, I, I feel you're, you guys are pushing for this roof, the roof mounted. That's what I feel.
Well, that is our recommendation, but this resolution is to allow architectural and engineering designs to occur, meaning they'll evaluate all of the options that are available and present us with the best recommendation from an architectural and design and an engineering option.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, and one other thing, no final decision on where these systems or units have been made. Again, this is just really to allow us to go in to investigate what would be the best option for the facility.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. I have Counselor Roebuck, and that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is a good picture to be looking at. So when you guys came up with the, with the amount for putting them on the ground, exactly where were you thinking they would go? Yeah, go back to that same picture. That was, I think was the best view with the two cars there. What, what space on the, because obviously you said it would block...
Just to keep in mind, so from the area, from the arrow where it says fire line?
Yes, sir.
All the way to the area where it says, or till you see that first white car there?
Yep.
That's the fire lane?
Okay.
That, that also has the grease trap. So we would have to move the fire system and move that grease trap system. So those are increased costs. We would, we would need enough room. The units physically, if, if we go with something similar to what we did on this north end, would take up the space that we show in the rendering. With, this would allow area for servicing to meet the current code.
Okay. So, so again, I guess you're saying that there's nowhere else. They could, they could not be put farther out away from the building, not on top of the grease trap, not blocking the fire line. They're going to be put on parking spaces next to the street or farther over this way. There isn't any, that is what I'm saying, is there a possibility that we wouldn't, there is a, and I'm not saying it's the best possibility, I'm just saying, is it a possibility that they could be put somewhere else that doesn't block the grease trap, doesn't block the, the fire line on, on the property? They have to be right there next to the building?
We, we could push them out farther, Counselor. We would just be incurring more cost. The further out we push them, then we would start getting into redesigning the, the mechanical duct system.
Sure.
So we would have to bring in a, a mechanical engineer, which would increase cost, possibly come inside and do some reducting for the, but it is a possibility.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
I have Counselor Foster. Counselor, you have the floor, and that exhausts my list.
My one question is probably going to be Monica, because don't we have an overflow on our bed fee? Aren't we about 100,000 over on the bed fee towards, from servicing debt?
Yeah, we have a, I think it's about a 300,000.
Okay. So why not go ahead and pull from bed fee instead of lodger's tax? Because lodger's tax, we can use for a lot of other things. Bed fee is more specific and it's, it's more germane to, to this issue.
I mean, that, that's a possibility. The convent, the, the bed fee is the 250 fee that we collect for the convention center.
Correct. And the lot, and lodger, and lodger's tax, we can use for a lot of other things. So 61,000 could go for a lot of other things where the bed fee is sitting at a plus side and it's specifically for the convention center. So...
Mr. Fuentes, did you want to jump in there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Foster. So while the, that fund may have the available funding just for this part of the request for the bigger project, it would have to be from the lodger's tax because there's, that's where the significant funding will be available for the bigger project.
Well, and I agree, can agree with that, but, but for this specifically, we, it's something that we could pull from. And actually, for the other project, we could use a mixture of both funds to actually pay for it, couldn't we? I mean, because that's what, that, that fee's very specific and it's, we can't use it for other mean, other things. And so why not go ahead and not tie our hands and use just lodger's tax to do this? That, that would be my proposal and I would...
All right. I think you raise a valid question. Mr. Neb, you want to address that?
Yeah, just very quickly, and I just want to make sure that staff is aware exactly what's being requested. So we're here to ask for 61,000 in order to do the architectural and engineering to determine what this project will look like. Is there any problem with utilizing the bed fee rather than that? Because once we know what the true cost of this project will be, we're going to have to come back for potentially another budget amendment anyway. So it's finance and...
So right now, the resolution states that we're going to take the money out of the lodger's tax. We'd have to change, amend that, first of all. Second, I would, in my opinion, suggest that we keep it in one fund as one project because of the two different funds. So the way we're...
So it's more of an accounting thing of if we take the money out of the bed fee for the one thing and then we're taking the rest of the money? It doesn't allow that project to stay packaged properly? Is that what?
That is correct. And this year's budget is focusing on project and project numbers. So we're wanting to keep all projects aligned in the budget with project numbers.
I can understand that, but I don't mind, my, my problem is using funds that we can use for something else. And, and the bed fee is specific for convention center. And I would say we, even when we get down to the point where we have to fund the half a million or whatever it's going to cost, use up what we have in that bed fee first and then go to lodger's tax. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, we switch from the funding mechanism from lodger's tax to bed fee on, let me use my glasses, for Resolution 2016.
All right. Let me, before I ask for a second, Mr. Holloman, do you feel comfortable with that phraseology by saying bed fee? I'm not sure if that's technically the correct term. I think we also, it's called a hospitality tax or hospitality fee, I think, in the statute.
I guess I would just recommend we get the language from finance, what that line item is called.
That is called the convention center fee.
Convention center fee. Okay. All right. We use, use that term, Counselor Foster?
I'm, yes. So I make a motion that we use the convention center fee to fund this for the Resolution 2016.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Point of order, don't we have a motion on the floor?
This is to amend the motion. This is an amendment to the resolution.
He didn't say amend, but he...
Okay. Yes, this is to amend Resolution 20-16, to change the source of the funding from lodger's tax to convention center fee. So I have a motion by Counselor Foster. Do we have a second? I have a second by Counselor Roebuck. We are now on a proposed amendment to Resolution 20-16. Counselor Foster, do you want to say anything more? Go to, okay. Counselor Best?
So I need a little bit of clarification here. When we okay this amendment, or if we okay this amendment, and we pull this out of the bed tax, and then we go and repair with the bed tax, it's going to be more than 300,000.
That's a separate budget adjustment to do the work.
I understand that, but again, you're pulling it from two different, okay. That, I guess, Monica, that's going to be your problem, huh?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. I have Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the convention center, are we not paying the payment on it from the convention fee?
Yes, we are. And we are able to fully pay the, I'm sorry, pay the full amount. So that's already budgeted. So we have an access right now.
So after, after you pay the, the yearly amount or by yearly, whatever, how much money do you have left?
Right now, I think there's a little over 300,000.
And so how much do you pay?
And I think our payment is, I think about 600,000, if I'm correct. But that's already budgeted.
Okay.
In 20, in 2020's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have Counselor Henderson. Counselor, on the amendment.
Thank you. I speak against the, the amendment because I realize that 61,000 is a lot of money. But in the scheme of things, the total price that we're going to end up paying for this project, it doesn't amount to that much. So to have to revise the, the, the resolution and to create a problem with our bookkeeping, I would just prefer to leave it the same.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other individuals wishing to speak on this matter. Unless there are additional questions, I will ask for a roll call vote on the amendment. This is simply on the amendment that changes the revenue source for the design work from lodger's tax to convention center fee. Once again, this is simply to, this is simply the amendment. This is not final action on the resolution. So a yes on the amendment changes the revenue source for the engineering and architectural work from lodger's tax to convention center fee. A no or nay rejects that and the funding source remains lodger's tax. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
No.
Counselor Best?
No.
Counselor Kennard?
Um, yes.
Counselor Roebuck?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Three yes, four no.
All right. We're back on the original resolution. Any further discussion or debate on the resolution as originally presented? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote, a yes or aye approves the Resolution 20-16 as presented, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
No, with explanation.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Roebuck?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
The motion is five to two. In order to pass a resolution, there has to be six yes votes for, from the entire governing body. So this motion would fail. And I would ask Mr. Holloman if you would concur with that?
That's correct. A motion requires six, a resolution requires six votes.
Okay. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
I really think that the, the convention fee is, the reason why we, we have that is to support this convention center. And it is specifically for this convention center. We can't use it for almost anything else. And so having 300,000 in that fund, it doesn't make sense to spend 61,000. I know that's not that much, but out of our lodger's tax, which we're always having to get pulled for, for other things. So, so that's why I voted no.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At, in the agenda, it calls for public participation before the city manager's presentation. And I have four individuals that have signed up to speak on non-agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, how this works is that you will have three minutes to speak on any topic. Did not have to be on the agenda. The three minutes, I ask you to begin with your name and your address. Counselor Henderson?
Rather than to, rather than to get stymied on, on this, on this air conditioning vote, I would like to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider will require five votes, at least one of whom was on the prevailing side, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Holloman. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The prevailing side in this matter were those who voted no. That would mean either Counselor Foster or Counselor Peterson would have to agree for this matter to be reconsidered. Is that correct, Mr. Holloman?
That, hmm, yes, I think that would be correct.
Okay. Let's make sure before I step in, into this. So before I, let me ask, if, let me ask the question. Would either Counselor Peterson or Counselor Foster be willing to reconsider the matter? Counselor Peterson answers no.
Well, let me, let me explain.
Okay.
I'm willing to change my vote in order to facilitate getting the job done. So since we're hung up on, on this vote, I, I would encourage those that are on the opposite side to allow us to vote again. And I will vote that we, that we accept the amendment.
Mr. Holloman, so if we do the motion to reconsider the entire matter, do we have to do a separate motion to reconsider the amendment?
Yeah, so first we would have to hold a motion to open the reconsideration. Then we would have a second motion on the resolution. And then were there to be a motion for amendment? There would be a third motion on the amendment itself, and then back to the original motion.
Okey dokey. You're going to have to help me with this because we're going to tread very carefully. So with that in mind, would Counselor Foster be willing to re, all right. At this point, I will entertain a formal motion to reconsider. Counselor Henderson, you want to make that motion?
Well, I thought that the other side had to make that motion.
No, one of the, one of them has to agree to it. It doesn't have to come from them.
I would move that we reconsider the vote on the amendment.
Well, on the resolution. We have to reconsider, on the resolution first. Correct, Mr. Holloman?
Okay. Reconsider on the, on the resolution.
Right.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Henderson, a second by Counselor Foster to reconsider, shall we say, our action on Resolution 20-16. Would that be a good wording?
That works.
Okay. This is a motion to reconsider the action taken by the council on proposed Resolution 20-16. I have a motion and a second. Is there any debate or discussion on the motion to reconsider? All right. Hearing none, I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye brings back Resolution 20-16 for reconsideration. A no or nay rejects that. And Ms. Call, that's a majority of the governing body for a motion to reconsider. Is that correct? Or a motion, a majority of those present and voting?
I believe with the reconsideration, it's those present and voting.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to reconsider the matter on action, our action on Resolution 20-16. A yes or aye approves the reconsideration, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Roebuck?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Five to two.
All right. I have a motion, five to two, to reconsider, take, to reconsider Resolution 20-16. We are back on Resolution 2016. Is there, I can either, well, all right. Counselor Foster?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to make an amendment to 2016 that we change the funding mechanism to the convention center fee rather than the lodger's tax fund.
Now, Mr. Holloman, before I go any further, do, can we go straight to an amendment or do I have to?
The, the reconsideration reopens the original motion.
Okay.
Which has the, already has a motion and a second, so we could go straight to the amendment.
Okay. So we have, I have a motion to amend by Counselor Foster and a second by Counselor Roebuck.
I'll have a second.
I'm sorry.
She can have it.
All right. All right. Counselor Kennard will be the second on the motion to amend the revenue or funding source from lodger's tax to... from lodger's tax to the convention center fee. Once, this is a motion to amend. This is not final action. This is simply motion to amend. Any discussion or debate on this? If not, I will ask for a roll call vote. A yes or aye amends the resolution by changing the revenue source from lodger's tax to convention center fee. A no or nay rejects that. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Five to two.
Okay. The amendment has passed. We are on an amended resolution twenty-sixteen. Any further discussion on the amended resolution? I will now call for a roll call vote on the resolution. A yes or aye approves the resolution as amended and no or nay rejects it. If we fail to have six affirmative votes, the matter is done. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Five to two.
Moving on, we will go to the, no, we're moving on to the public participation. I have four individuals that have signed up to speak on this matter. They, once again, I will ask you to come forward. You will have three minutes. Begin with stating your name and your address. The four individuals, I ask you to all to line up here. Juliana Halverson, Molly Boils, Dr. Cassand, and Dr. Jewell, if you'll just line up like that. And go ahead, Ms. Halverson.
Hi, my name is Juliana Halverson, 502 Sunrise Road in Roswell. Mayor, city councilors, first, I'm here to talk about the UFO Festival. Many of you are aware it's being moved. So when we met originally with the city in October of last year, after the festival was over and they asked us to move it, initially, we agreed to it, because first off, we wanted to make sure that they didn't have events at Sierra Grande. We wanted to have them closer to downtown. And we wanted to continue our partnership with the city, because the partnership with the city is why the festival happens, because we couldn't do it without any city services, financial, and everything that you guys do for us. So in hindsight, I probably shouldn't have agreed to it immediately. We should have, you know, talked to our merchants downtown. But I know you guys were going based off on a survey you guys had done, and I think like two hundred, Joe, two hundred emails went out? And only like forty of the merchants responded, and most of them, more than fifty percent, said that downtown events don't help their business. So you guys were going off that. But after we've talked to our merchants, and this, I guess you're aware, the UFO Museum was ready to pull out of the event as well completely. So we've polled our own merchants, and ninety-seven percent of them want to keep the event downtown. So the problem we have is with the, being at the Civic Center parking lot, there's no shade, no trees, everyone's going to be hot, and there are advantages to it, like we can set up earlier, but we're concerned with our downtown merchants being harmed by the move. So we've met with Joe and Stephanie and Juanita, and we think we've come up with a plan to try to get more merchants downtown, and we probably don't expect it to be moved this year, but we're afraid, I'm just giving my opinion, that it's going to hurt the businesses. So we're doing everything we can to try to help that. I'm just making a point that it's, it's not good, I don't think, to be at the Civic Center, because it's out of our district. So it's just, anything else, yeah. So thank you again. We do appreciate the partnership, because, and Joe and Juanita and them and Stephanie have been great. We're trying to make it successful. We're trying to keep a positive attitude, and we're trying to keep our merchants to keep a positive attitude, but it's, I don't think the move is a good thing. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, name and address.
Good evening, my name is Molly Boils, 601 Tierra Berinda. I volunteer with the UFO Committee, but I'm also a business owner downtown. So this is not very ladylike, but I'll say it, I've already said it in one meeting. As a member of the committee for the UFO Festival, I'm going to work my tail end off like I have every single year to make this a successful event. But as a business owner downtown, guys, I'm pissed. This is going to hurt like you can't believe. I have two weeks of the year that are really, really good for my business. My business has been around for more than fifteen years. The week between, right after Thanksgiving, you know, Black Friday's not such a big deal, but Small Business Saturday is fantastic, and I have a great week. That following week, and the UFO Festival week, is a fabulous week for my business. When we have thousands of people walking the sidewalks and down the middle of Main Street, guess what? They pop into our businesses. They may or may not do that this year. It's going to hurt. So I'm here as a business owner, not as a board member of Main Street Roswell, but as a business owner, telling you that I really think this was a very poor decision. And I hope that we can have a successful event this year, but that next year, it is reconsidered and brought back downtown. I thank you for your time, and we do appreciate the partnership with the city. We know the city puts in tons of money and tons of hours. It's a huge event for our town, but we got to remember the little guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, state your name and address.
Masud Korsan, MD, CEO of Chimera Independent Physicians, 407 West Country Club Road. When I told my wife that I'm going to come here, she asked me not to come, because there is a five to eight percent risk of having Corona in this meeting, based on the data that if anybody wants, I can provide to them, after this session. But I came because I thought this is my ethical responsibility to show up here. My risk of death is about eight percent if I get Corona. The two percent risk is not accurate. I was here to ask the council to consider a few things, including banning mass gatherings in Roswell to prevent Corona spread. But since I came here, it looks like New Mexico Health Department banned any mass gathering in New Mexico in between. So this is considered banned at this point, number one. Number two, they closed the school system for three weeks in New Mexico. So it looks like New Mexico is taking the right steps. I want, I have a third request now. I want to make sure that the city is aware what kind of masks are available for first responders. That's why I brought different masks that we have studied over the last four weeks. The mayor knows that we have been working on Corona for the last four weeks to make sure that we are prepared. He was in a meeting with us about two, two and a half weeks ago, that we put all the hospital CEOs together, and my understanding is, I don't think the healthcare system in the town is ready yet. I don't get that feeling that they are, just to let you know. But what you see on my face is an N95 mask. N95 is designed to prevent the Corona to get into your mouth, but is not by itself adequate for first responders. If somebody coughs into their face, they also need a goggle. The goggle has to be splash proof. A regular goggle is not adequate. I've seen in the news in Washington and other places, first responders go with this type of mask, a surgical mask. A surgical mask is not adequate to prevent the Corona to get into your mouth or nose. It's designed to make sure the germs don't go out of your mouth outside. It's a good idea for anybody who coughs to put it on their face, not to spread the disease, but it's not designed for first responders not to get the disease. They will get it. In other countries, it's high percentage of the dead victims are healthcare workers, because they don't know how to use the mask or the appropriate protective equipment. N95, despite its effectiveness...
I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
Time has run out.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, your first responders have...
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Next up?
So this evening, I noticed that a lot of people were...
Now, state your name and address, sir.
Dr. Peter Jewell. My address is 6 Stevens Circle here in Roswell. I noticed when I walked in this evening that a lot of people were making jokes about us wearing our masks. But I think I agree with Dr. Korsan that we're not prepared for what's going on or what's coming. If you've noticed across the country recently, not only are our schools closed for three weeks, but the NBA has canceled games. Major League Baseball is about to cancel the season. The NFL has canceled the annual owners' meeting. These are very big money issues. And I'm not sure that Roswell is prepared for our schools closing for three weeks. And I know that I've listened to the president speak many, many times, the vice president speak many, many times, about these funds that are going to be available for everybody. But what are we doing locally? Are we doing anything? I can tell you that, working in the healthcare field, we're having a difficult time just getting patients tested. We've tested over, I myself have tested three patients. I don't know how many patients have been tested in my office besides myself. But the vice president said that all we needed was a doctor's order to get these things ordered. That's not the truth. I have an MD after my name. Why is it that I can write an order for a flu swab, but I cannot order a swab for coronavirus? We have to go through fifteen different other things before they say yes. And I have a patient that I saw today that we did a second test on that has to pay for their second test. And if you've been following the news at all, you probably have noticed that the person in Texas that tested positive after two negatives. And the Department of Health said, no, I can't test that patient a second time. So I am about, because I do have some political friends, I'm about to ask them to help me get in touch with at least the vice president if something's not done. But hopefully, you guys have some power here, and maybe you can help me change some things here. We need to get people tested. That is what all of the epidemiologists are telling us, that's the only way to stop this. And it's going to be worse than I think everybody noticed or has any idea of.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Next up, city manager reports, Mr. Neb.
All right, Mayor, city council, thank you for the work tonight. Just really briefly, I've got a couple slides to talk about upcoming events, and then I'm going to give some time to Karen Sanders, our emergency operations manager, to talk a little bit more about what all, what we are doing in light of this, this virus. So just really quickly, and as you noticed on there, this slide is out of date now. Both the New Mexico Municipal League District Five meeting and the New Mexico Municipal League newly elected official meetings have been postponed or canceled. We'll, we'll keep an eye on that as we go through that. The city council swearing ceremony will continue at March 30th here, at 5:30 at the convention center. We do have an Air Center funding celebration with the EDC. We're bringing in our legislators. The governor has been invited for March 31st to recognize the investment of the $5 million to help with the Roswell Air Center. And then, of course, the council workshop, retreat, whatever you want to call it at this point in time, will be held on Saturday, April 25th, going from 8:30 till 2:30. We are trying to keep it tight to about six hours, not wear you guys out in order to have the conversation. Right now, what we use these workshops and retreat for is an opportunity for you as a city council to talk to yours, each other, in order to help provide us with priorities and help us provide, provide us direction for vision. So it will be held. The location did change, we're at the Recreation and Aquatic Center on Saturday, April 25th. The tentative topics right now is, I will give a city manager report on the front side with where we're moving with the budget and, and some personnel updates. But then, these are the four topics, because we're going to try to keep it to about six hours. We're going to cover some of the rules of order. Sidewalks and signage, which through this political cycle this last season, for the local, there's a lot of question about where signs should be placed, and so we're going to bring that conversation back. We do want to talk about projects, because again, we'll be talking about the available money that we have to put to operations and projects. So we want to make sure that we have a clear direction on those projects. And again, we want to talk a little bit more about the Air Center and where we're headed with that. So if, if you desire to change any of those topics, that, because this is your meeting, this is your opportunity, please let me know, and we will adjust. It is more for your information. Staff will be there in order to help support your conversation. So other than that, I would invite Karen Sanders up to discuss an update from, from the emergency operations side.
I have, Counselor Oropesa had a question for you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, on the topic of projects, are you talking about specific projects, or are you talking about the priority list?
I'm, well, and we'll get into the priority list. Of course, we do the ICIP priority list in October, but I am talking about the entire project list. So the, the list that we introduced last August, and we worked on, and then we ended up getting to the, what's called the ICIP, where we asked for legislative funding. That's where we're headed. But that first document where we had all, every project that we know of, that's going to, that's capital in nature, will be, it's, we're in the phase two of that process, so we want to make sure that we, we have a clear conversation about what projects are out there.
I would like to see the top five priority, the priority list, to have a discussion and maybe revisit some of those projects that are on that list.
Certainly. And I, and we're happy to do that as well, too, so.
Okay. Very good, Counselor. Mr. Neb, go ahead.
All right, I'll just invite Karen up, and I'll get out of the way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief overview of what the state is doing and what we're doing locally in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. For most people, it causes mild and moderate symptoms such as fever and cough. Oops, Sharon already switched me. Thank you, Sharon.
Sorry.
Back. One more. Thank you, okay. Sorry. For most people, it causes mild or moderate symptoms such as fever and cough. For some, especially older adults and those with existing health problems, it can cause more serious illness, including pneumonia. Currently, in the United States, there are more than 1,200 cases, and there have been 36 deaths, with cases in 42 states and the District of Columbia. Here in New Mexico, there are now six presumptive positive cases awaiting CDC confirmation, and 167 negative test results, for a total of 173 tests. The cases in New Mexico include a couple in Socorro County, a husband and wife in their 60s that traveled to Egypt, two cases in Bernaleo County, a woman in her 70s with recent travel to the New York City area, and a woman in her 40s with a possible travel link. A Santa Fe County woman in her 60s with known recent travel to the New York City area, and the newest case is a Santa Fe County woman in her 50s with recent travel to Italy. The New Mexico Department of Health has been reviewing emergency response plans and preparing for quite some time. The last pandemic was an influenza pandemic in 2009. Plans have been adapted based on what we know about the coronavirus. The focus is on measures to track cases identified in New Mexico, prevent the spread of infections, support the healthcare system, and increase communication efforts. The Department of Health has implemented expanded testing. Testing is now being offered to all patients with respiratory symptoms, fever and cough, shortness of breath, who test negative for influenza. This testing is available here in New Mexico at the state scientific laboratory, where they have the capacity to test 2,400, and they are working with other laboratories to establish additional testing locations across the state. Results are usually available within 24 hours. Public health response is multi-layered, with the goal of detecting and minimizing introductions of this virus to reduce the spread and impact. Public health has been working to identify cases as early as possible and implement isolation procedures to prevent further spread of the virus. The New Mexico Department of Health has increased their number of press releases and public service announcements, and added a COVID-19 specific page on their website to help New Mexicans stay updated on the current situation and on professional guidance. Already in place is the New Mexico Health Alert Network, which allows for rapid dissemination of information to healthcare partners and emergency response personnel. of information to healthcare partners and emergency response personnel. There has been an increase in web conferences and conference calls with partners such as hospitals, emergency medical services, childcare organizations, and universities and schools to provide updates and guidance for preparing and responding to cases in New Mexico and to answer questions that stakeholders have. Weekly counts of hospital bed availability and inventory of masks, respirators, and personal protective equipment needed for infection control are being done. The Department of Health officials presented the latest information at a public forum in Roswell last Friday, March 6th, which was one of several held throughout the state. Broader surveillance of vulnerable populations has been implemented, and just this week, the Department of Health's Division of Health Improvement announced they began reviewing nursing home infection control protocols, and will be deploying a healthcare survey team to conduct onsite visits of the 269 licensed assisted living facilities statewide. One back, sorry. So, what can you do? Everyone has a role to play. One back, Sharon. Thank you. I think the message that I want to get out is don't panic, be prepared, and stay informed. We are still in respiratory illness season. The same interventions that are helpful for influenza are helpful for the coronavirus. Be familiar with recommendations to avoid getting and spreading respiratory illnesses, including the coronavirus. These recommendations include: Stay home when sick and limit close contact with people; avoid large public gatherings; and stay six feet away from others; cover your cough and sneezes with a tissue and throw that tissue in the trash; avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth; clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces; and probably the most important thing you can do is wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. I also encourage you to have extra supplies on hand as part of being prepared for any type of emergency: over-the-counter meds, household items, and groceries, so that if you are sick, you won't have to make a trip out, except to possibly seek medical care. Actions we have taken locally include increased communication and collaboration with the Department of Health to stay up to date with the latest information; 911 dispatch has implemented call screening protocols for calls involving a sick person or person with breathing difficulties; first responders are training and following CDC recommendations; we have implemented increased environmental cleaning efforts; and I also wanted to mention that in August of last year, our local health department and hospitals participated in a statewide exercise involving a highly infectious disease with a focus on a pandemic response. Because this is a rapidly changing situation, you can stay up to date by regularly checking the CDC website in addition to the New Mexico Department of Health website. The Department of Health has set up a 24/7 hotline. That number is 1-855-600-3453. Please call this number for guidance if you believe you have symptoms before going to a hospital or healthcare provider. The goal is to provide patient care in a way that does not expose others to possible infection. However, if it is an emergency or you are severely ill, call 911. The governor of New Mexico has issued a public health emergency. This maximizes resources available to the state. She is urging New Mexicans to avoid large public gatherings, particularly if you are a high-risk individual. And not listed on today's slides, because it's a new development, Health Secretary Kathy Kunkel issued an order temporarily prohibiting mass gatherings in New Mexico in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The order defines mass gatherings as events that bring 100 or more people in a single room or connected space like auditoriums, stadiums, arenas, conference centers, and theaters. This order is in effect for 29 days through April 9th and could be extended. In response to this order, the city of Roswell has canceled or postponed events or activities that will host more than 100 people in its city facilities. Also, a new development, and not on the slides, New Mexico schools to temporarily close. The governor, New Mexico Public Education Department and Department of Health, announced that New Mexico K-12 public schools will close for three weeks. The closure begins at the end of the school day tomorrow, March 13th, and more details will be in a governor press conference tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. The governor also advises that all, to avoid all non-essential travel to affected out-of-state areas and exercise extreme caution with all out-of-state travel. City of Roswell employee travel is being managed on a case-by-case basis. Remain home and self-isolate if you are sick. Notify the Department of Health using their hotline. Please, take precautionary steps to protect your individual health. Again, I cannot emphasize enough, to stay home if you are sick, avoid large crowds, and wash your hands often. I hope you temper fear with facts and reason, panic with patience and preparation, and uncertainty with education and information, and let's all work together to protect our community. And with that, I stand for any questions.
I have Counselor Henderson, Counselor.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate the great report. I would hope that we would include in our webpage the phone numbers that you mentioned in your report, and also the website for the Department of Health and CDC that people can see on the city's website where to call or where to phone.
Sure, we can do that.
So, I would encourage that. One item caught my eye, is the fact that you mentioned there were 2,400 tests in New Mexico. Now, is that tests that are available?
Yes, tests that are available.
So, obviously, we're grossly short on tests.
Well, I think that's probably a better question for the Department of Health. So, they don't test every individual. You have to meet certain criteria. So, the governor is saying that we are not grossly under...
Well, when you think of 2,400 tests for a million people, you're, I think you're kidding yourself if you don't think you're under staff.
Our numbers were a total of, we've done 173 tests so far.
Okay, I think, I think maybe the doctors...
Just a minute, Counselor. Doctor, you will not do that again, or Lieutenant Smith will remove you from this building. This is not a free-for-all. Do you understand?
Well...
All right, we will... I apologize, Counselor Anderson.
Well, I think the doctor may have some input on this, but I, it just seems to me that we need a lot more tests, and obviously, we need to be testing a lot more people. So, I just mentioned that, because I think if we're going to whip this thing, we've got to be able to test people. And, Mayor, I would invite the doctor up if he has any comments about that, because we need to get more tests available to our people here in Roswell.
Mr. Doc, Counselor Henderson, why don't we hear from the Department of Health individuals that are in the audience that were part of Ms. Sanders' team first? They may be able to address this.
This is Jimmy Masters, he's with the New Mexico Department of Health. He's the Southeast Region Director.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us here today.
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jimmy Masters, I'm the Regional Director for Southeast Region Public Health Division, New Mexico Department of Health. And I will also bring up here with me shortly, Lisa Yorco, who is our Nurse Epidemiologist. And so, you know, what we're finding, things are changing on a regular basis, for one. So, as we're getting more information, things are changing pretty much on a dime. And so, what we're trying to do is get more education, we're trying to get more of the information, like you're talking about the websites, and trying to get those onto the city and county websites as well. And then, I will also have our epidemiologist, our Nurse Epidemiologist, Lisa Yorco, with some other details.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Lisa Yorco. I'm a Nurse Epidemiologist for the state. Counselor, Mayor, in reference to your questions, Mr. Henderson, the 2,400 number is just the beginning for the state. There will be more tests available, but also no Quest Diagnostics and LabCorp have testing available to the people of the public as well. It's just not an individual item for the state of New Mexico.
And one more? And your next, you had one other person wanting to speak on it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, and so, I'd like to introduce to you Christine Amiconi. She's our Emergency Preparedness Specialist for the Southeast Region.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to also bring to light that flu is still really prevalent in New Mexico, and it's really still high. And people need to take the same precautions that they do for the flu. And, you know, we, in the United States, we've had almost 20,000 people die of the flu. So, we need to keep that in mind, too, because that affects everyone, and even children. But I just want people to understand, we need to, all these precautions we're taking for this, we should also be taking for the flu.
Okay. All right, Counselor.
Well, I would like to hear from the doctor again, but let me just say that, you know, the only way, it appears to me, and I don't, I'm not an expert, but we've got to be able to, if this is something we're going to whip, we've got to be able to identify it. And the only way we're going to identify it is be able to test for it. And if we don't have the test, it looks like we're out of luck. Let me take it from the doctor.
All right, Doctor Corzan.
I apologize for interrupting. I feel it's my ethical duty to do what is important for my patients or for the population. Let me explain a little bit the statistics. We have diagnosed four patients. What that does mean statistically is that we have at least 180 people infected in New Mexico. When you diagnose four people, you have to multiply by about 30 to 40 to see how many are infected, because it takes two weeks before they are diagnosed. If we have 120 infected, the rate of doubling of Corona COVID-19 in New Mexico, in the United States right now, is every two days, it doubles. That's our rate, calculated. If anybody needs more information, I can give them statistics that I have with me after this meeting. I've been told not to distribute anything here, that's why I have it, but I'm not giving it to you. Otherwise, I would have put a slide for you to explain how the Corona works. Now, statistically, there is a high likelihood that the first case in here will be diagnosed. Statistically, it's calculated that 30 to 50% of Americans will get Corona. That was published by Bill Gates in the Journal of General Medicine. I trust you, and you trust his judgment and calculation. Statistically, right now, the death rate in Italy and the United States is between 3.1 to 4 to 5%. Statistically, the kids don't die from it. Nobody has died under age of 10 from Corona. The victims are elderly, and to your surprise, even young people. Many, many of my classmates in other countries have died from this, at age of my age, or between 30 and 40. The first guy who discovered it died, and he wasn't old, and he didn't have any underlying disease. It depends how much of virus load you get when somebody coughs up in your face. The healthcare providers are the first line of defense, and right now, we don't have enough N95 masks in this community or anywhere in the United States. So, what we are talking about, if the 30 to 50% of population in the U.S. is involved, we're talking about 100 million people, and somewhere between 2 million and 10 million will die. The total death from flu was less than 40,000 this year so far. It's about 10,000, I believe. So, this is a different scale. We are not talking about flu death. We are talking about 30 to 50 times more deaths than flu. And in the U.S., Bill Gates, Bill Gates, he knows what he's talking about. He calculated somewhere between 10 to 15 million will die in the United States. The Spanish flu killed 200,000 people in October of next year. So, I'm begging you guys to pay attention to this and not think. Let me talk about the testing. We have been testing, today we tried for two hours to contact the phone number, we couldn't get through. We got Quest approved today to do the test, but Quest charges $200, Medicaid pays $35. So, we have to tell our patients, "You are responsible for the rest." This is how it works. We can't get through. We started, we sent three tests today total from our clinic for Corona, with patients having to pay to fight, because they didn't have a choice. But I don't think everybody's going to accept that. We are in trouble.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Henderson, you still have the floor.
Well, while the other doctor is available to us, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
All right, Counselor Henderson.
I would just like to say also, what Dr. Corson did not mention is, and I tried to talk about it earlier, two patients today, both myself and Dr. Dake, that also works in our clinic. He had a patient, the first week of symptoms, we'll show you, it's a little bit different than what we're hearing on TV. First week of symptoms, you're going to have a productive cough, not a dry cough. Productive cough, that's the first week. You're also going to have a very mild fever. You may have diarrhea, you may not. The second week is when we have pneumonia, when we have a high fever, and it can go between 93 degrees, I'm sorry, normal and temperature and 103 degrees. And it can go up and down, and up and down, and up and down. Anyway, Dr. Dake had a patient that had recent travel to Mexico, had had off and on diarrhea, coughing, and they said, "No, we could not send them the test." I, myself, and I have read about four separate occasions where patients have tested negative on the first test, and then when they went for the second test, they tested negative. On the third test, they tested positive. They refused to take my test today, with a patient that had a fever of 101 and has had it for two weeks, with dry cough. So, sorry, but I don't believe the statistics that we just saw.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Henderson, you still have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the doctor's comments. I think this is something that is bigger than we ever dreamed, and I think that we need to be cognizant of all these things that pop up on us, and that we need to be sure that we protect ourselves and our families.
All right, I have Counselor Pace. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want a clarification from the people from the state and Karen, because there's been mixed messages as far as the test is concerned, whether they, whether individuals can get a free test, or are they going to get charged? And if they can pay, will they be turned away?
Thank you. We know that testing at the state level is free. When it comes to an individual's health insurance, their health coverage, we are uncertain of that. And I know that doesn't answer your question nor help. But as we know right now, with state testing available, it's of zero cost. The insurance companies were not purveyors of that information.
Okay. Because that makes it very difficult to address the issue, if indeed you have somebody that has no insurance and doesn't have money to pay for the test.
Absolutely true. Absolutely true. I'm uncertain as to what Medicaid is doing or any other private insurance is doing. But a person may have to call their insurance carrier to check those prices. I know that just this week, there was a new ICD-10 code to allow for billing for COVID-19, but I'm uncertain of those prices.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Mr. Neb, anything else you'd like to share with us before we adjourn?
No, just to wrap this up, the one thing that the city's really taking, I guess, the front with this is to make sure that we are educating and we're providing the information that everybody needs. We are doing what we have to do for the public health orders, and we're going to stay close with the Department of Health through this process. But I think our role in this is to make sure that the information gets to the people that need it the most, and making sure that we maintain our, as environmentally friendly, all of our facilities as we have people coming and going. So, that's what we will focus on, that's what we'll concentrate on. But I know Karen will stay close with the Department of Health. But I know Karen will stay close with the Department of Health and the state, try to make sure that we get the information out as quickly as possible, because this thing is changing very quickly. So Mayor, City Council, that was my report.
Thank you. I have 8:30, and at this time, we will be adjourned.